Bob.
Hi, Bob.
Bob, just a heads up for you, this time was set aside as a work session. It's very possible that there will not be a quorum of the LAB in attendance. But it was just kind of set aside, obviously, in the case that there would be a quorum attending the work session, it had to be properly warned as such and open to members of the public.
Hello, all.
Hi, Tom.
So for the benefit of Amrin and Bob, this is a work session that was noticed as a public meeting because it may be a public meeting if we have a quorum of apportionment board members present. But we may not have a quorum, but in either event, we conducted, I guess, what you might call the regular business of the board from 9:00 to 11:00 this morning, and the purpose of this segment is to see if there can be some collaborative work on some specific mapping exercises that three or four members have been working on individually. And since we didn't know whether these were going to be, we were going to have a quorum of the board, we noticed them as a public meeting in our proceeding fashion this morning. Each of those working draft maps was presented and not gone through district by district, but each board member who has been working on a map sort of gave a tour, a quick tour of the whole map. I think I'm expecting to see Bob, rather Rob Roper and Tom Koch sometime soon. So that's that's a heads up about what this time is all about.
Thanks, Tom. That's helpful. That sounded like what I heard was going to happen from the meeting this morning, but I just figured I'd poke my head in in case this was helpful informationally for me for the future, just to get more familiar with the towns. As you know, this is my first time in the reapportionment go around. So but if you would prefer that I not be here, I don't need to be here. I was just curious.
We, the curious are always welcome.
Thank you. Just pretend I'm not here.
And Tom, Tom Koch is on the premises. He should be here any minute. And Bob Kinsel is at a loss for words. You can see that Bob can hear us but cannot speak to us. So it's a real opportunity.
He is not obliged. See, I have a message from Mia.
I was just looking at Mia's message as well. So her question is, how do we want to deliver these maps to the towns? And she's suggesting we do it in a digital format. But that's something for the LAB to determine, I think.
I guess I go with that advice. However, I think we would be mistaken if we were. I think we should be responsive and helpful if someone says, I can't, that doesn't work for me. Can you send me something that I can print? And I think an 11 by 17 version is what is the minimum size at which this becomes workable for people. And this could be, and I don't understand what Mia may have to go through, but I had been envisioning a printable map that people could link to and print themselves, which might mean that it would be in a PDF format. I know 10 years ago, at one point up at Redstone, we had some printed maps that were more like three or four feet across and five or six feet high that were tacked to the wall. Just reflecting the demographic and digital divide on the people.
Has anyone heard from Rob Roper?
Yeah, he, I got, I don't know what, let me see whether this was a text message or not. He's running a few minutes late. And I don't, I don't recall whether he's initially this morning, he said he was going to be coming in person. And he may still be doing that. And Chris, I don't know that you need to hang around. We probably need someone who can help with the tech side of this, or at least be available to jump in on that score, but I don't know that you you know, if we need, to the extent we need to produce minutes from this discussion, I think I can help do that, but if we only have not more than three people, the minutes won't be much of a problem.
I was hoping you'd say that, and I appreciate that, Tom. I think I'm gonna head upstairs. Eric is standing by. He can actually take minutes, which I said the same thing. If it's just a work session looking at lines, then the minutes shouldn't be anything too extensive.
And unless there's objection, we did have this set up to record like we have for other meetings. And I can continue to do that, and that can go on the website as well.
Yeah, I think recording it will be good.
But yeah, I'm right upstairs. Holler in here. Come on up.
Eric, if you hadn't heard from anybody for about 25 minutes, you might want to come downstairs and see what the hell's going on.
Noted.
All right. Good luck.
Thank you. Well, I just noticed another problem with district builders, lack of boundaries. When you go to put St. Albans City and Town into a district, along comes Fairfield and Fletcher. Doesn't seem to be a way to separate them out.
I mean, when you try to click to add those in, you can't reverse that? Is that what you're saying?
Well, no, they they don't have the town boundaries in there. So you click on St. Albans Town.
Yeah, I think, when I was working on that and this, I think I found that not with, it happened infrequently, but there were some towns like that.
Yeah.
So you had to do it census block by census block. Let me go back and look at what Rob said. So he said it would be closer to 1:15, but he'll be there in person. He had the nerve to stop and eat some lunch. One thing, Tom, if you could keep track of this is a question I asked Jeremy. And at some point, for each map or each portion of a map, it would be good to know that at least in the single member district versions, how many times a town is divided? So we have a cumulative total of those.
Now, one of the principles I tried to use was if a town made a single or double district by itself, leave it alone. Don't split it up and feed it someplace else.
Right, I agree with that. And if if the deviations are not otherwise a problem in a place like Middlebury, we could, and I think Middlebury's deviations are okay. We could say to Middlebury, well, I don't, I think in Jeremy's map, he's going to propose an internal division of Middlebury. But if we don't go with that, we could offer to the Middlebury Board of Civil Authority, for example, that if you wish, or if you prefer to have two single member districts, please give us a proposed division line inside the town of Middlebury that would do that.
Well, I would prefer to tell them that they ought to.
Right, well, and one way to do that is to draw the line ourselves and say, if you don't like it, you can redraw it.
True.
Tom, are you getting any sense that the Boards of Civil Authority in your area are aware of this and are anticipating what they're going to be getting and are starting to plan for that process?
Yes. Well, of course, I've been available to let them know. And we've been, we've been dealing with tax appeals, so we've had frequent BCA meetings. I have some pushback on the idea of single member districts. Two members has worked well for Barrytown over the years. I don't deny that. But I can't I can't defend even Barrytown as a two-member district, advocating that everybody else be single member.
Right.
And I'll tell you, this is tedious, is doing the the district by blocks up in St. Albans. There are a lot of blocks to click on.
Yeah, imagine. There we go. You said earlier this morning, Tom, that you thought that at one point that was it Cabot and Marshfield at one point, we're in a house district together.
I believe so, yeah. Certainly, Marshfield and Plainfield were.
Yeah, and I think I recall Callis and East Montpelier.
Yeah. I've been clicking on these things without regard to incumbencies. But I do know that Callis and East Montpelier will generate some mashing of teeth.
I know, right, well, there's a I know the member from Callis, who is, is there an incumbent who lives in East Montpelier?
Yes, there is. And Janice Hansel is in Callis.
I'm going to step away just for a moment. I'll be back.
Any apologies. Everything conspired against me getting here, including the fact that the sidewalk's been torn up here, which added another 30 seconds.
I was marveling at my power. Last time I was here, I said, boy, they really need to fix this block. They have the car today. It's locked up. They're fixing it.
Here's a cheat sheet on my map of the towns I've put together so far. I printed one out for you too, Tom, but you're not here, so I will email you a copy. So how are we proceeding?
Well, any way we want. I thought if it worked for you, Rob, if you wanted to start looking at the towns, the undistricted towns on your working draft. Districted towns on your working draft. And and try to start building some districts there. I mean, that that might, that's one place to start. But if you have another, if you have other priorities in terms of tweaking. Parts of the state where you've already laid out districts, that's fine with me.
Yeah, I guess. Just finishing up these last two districts, we've got Addison County and and. Chittenden County, most of what has to happen in Chittenden County is just carving up. Burlington. And then carving up South Burlington, which is which is fairly easy, there's some trick. I ran into problems in my other map, my 149 house seat map of in Addison County around. Around Middlebury. So we can look at that, the other thing, the other, the other alternative is to look at the map that is here. And if you see any ways that we can clean up some of the. Some of the towns that did you, did you get the, I emailed this to you, Tom?
Yes, I did, I have it.
So, yeah, what I've got in here is the towns that are highlighted in green are the ones that are split. To some degree. So if there's a way we can clean up any of those lines. Some is it's inevitable, but. Maybe there's a way to to make it so we have fewer fewer splits.
Well. Burlington. If I did that right. Yeah, Burlington is entitled to 10.43. 10.44. Representatives. So. Rounding that because it makes it 10. Then they can. Their own bridge a little bit.
Yeah, there's, there's 10 incumbents in in Burlington and the proviso that there's that. There's a screwy little piece of Burlington near the Winuski River that's in the. The Winuski two-member house district.
And South Burlington is 4.73.
Well, my my other map, the one that I actually did do, Burlington. I wish I could just cut and paste into this one because I did go in. You know, district block by district block. And sort of started with all of the existing districts as they are and just moved. One block here, one block there. So I I would say, and it worked out pretty neatly. So from my perspective, that's just a tedious job that needs to be done, I don't think there's a whole lot of. Of sweat that needs to go under thinking that we'll send it to them and then they can change it if they want.
It would, Tom and I were talking about that. Before you got in, Rob, and. Certainly, if you if you want. To. Push for single-member districts, if you simply. Leave the town or the city. Unsubdivided and say, please draw single district. Boundary lines, you may not get what you are looking for, but if you draw them. The the town or the city is very, very likely to respond. With different lines.
I mean, did you say or did somebody say that 10 years ago, the experience was that? When we asked the. Where's the civil authority for their responses, the. It was answered with a resounding silence.
I know that, I know that. My recollection is that the the apportionment board. Asked Burlington to draw internal lines. And. That they didn't. And that ultimately got done in the during the legislative session. When it got down closer to the wire.
No, I I think then. It would be wise for us to. To admit tentative lines and say, if you don't like it, like what we've done, tell us what you prefer.
And Burlington currently has two single-member districts and four two-member districts. Burlington also has kind of a. Okay, I guess you'd say creative. City Council districting where. There's two types of districts, there are the more compact ones. And then there's what there are one or two larger districts with more people in them. That I think is was the result of a. Just hitting the wall with trying to figure out how to do it differently, and they came up with that model. So, Rob, does it make, do you want to try to put a map up by sharing a screen, does that?
Hmm, let's see, I'm not actually participating in the Zoom at this point, but I suppose I can, is it the same?
And now it's a, I think we each got an invitation. In if you're in your. Partners. Dot Vermont dot gov, you should have received an invitation. That has the agenda and the link.
Oh, I'm I'm not, can you forward that to my regular email, I'm not logged into the other one?
Let's see.
I've been having an issue with that since I changed addresses.
Well, Eric can probably, let me see if I can do it, I got it, I got it, and I accepted it.
Eric, if I email you the link, could you, could you do it?
Yes.
I want to do that, I'll email you the link to my district builder app here. All right, I just shot that your way.
Right, it might take a second to come through.
So while we're waiting for that to to get to air, you know, like some of the questions I have is like for Jericho Underhill. If we're going to make that into two single-member districts, it's a. Which one's the southern, Jericho is slightly heavy, so you could just split it, the other way to do it and have one town. Have Underhill be entirely whole. So unsplit, but with an addition. Of some of Jericho. Or what you can do is my older map is I try to take the more urban. Town centers of Jericho and Underhill and put them into a district. Looking at the submunicipal town boundary lines, which of course divides both towns, but it seems like it might be more common, does anybody have any thoughts on that?
Let me just.
Am I not being clear?
No, you're, I, I get it. I'm just going to my list of. Town populations. The Jericho's got 5105. For population. And. Underhill's at 3125. So you, it seemed to me you'd have to cut. Jericho. And at the north end of Jericho, push. 800 or 1,000. Residents into. An underhill. Dominated district.
Yeah.
By the way, Tom, I emailed you a copy of this easily printable. Town by town. Population list, did you get that?
Yes, well, I I got it from. Chris like last week in the mail.
Okay, I didn't know that he did, I I, so now you got it twice, okay.
Yeah, so when I lose this one, it'll be available, thank you.
So Tommy, Tom Little, you think it makes more sense to keep? Jericho intact and just take some from Underhill or vice versa, Rob?
Well, I think you've got to do it that way, don't you?
Well, the other, the way I was describing is is you can have split both towns and have like a. Because currently it's already, it's a two-member district, you can split west versus east. On the current district, I'm looking at it from the current district perspective versus the town border perspective.
Okay.
So. So I'm I'm wondering what will be more culturally. Consistent with what's there now, from a town line, because if you want to preserve town lines, yeah, you take, take the larger town. You keep a smaller town intact and you lob off the other one, but if you have a Jericho Underhill. Ethos that exists, you could have two Jericho Underhill. Districts, like one sort of focusing around the two village centers on the west coast of the district. And then you have the rest being the more rural surrounding areas.
There's, there's a, there's a, there's a good share of the population of Jericho that. Most people driving through it probably think they're in Richmond. There's a lot of, you know, sort of the bedroom community development down there. And then up on Route 15, you've got the the village center of Jericho. And then. The. Population center of Underhill is very close to the Jericho border.
Yeah.
So if you. So if you were going to, yeah, this could be true, and then there's, there's the 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 eastern part of. Jericho. Is more much more sparsely settled.
Yeah, that's just the mountain, that's not the answer.
So. Taking that 800. Residents out of Jericho. The. Cutting close to the. The core of Jericho, the sort of the village area of Jericho, I think, but. I'm only using a, you know, a G. Vermont Atlas. And that, I'm not looking at. Census blocks. Then, of course, you've got a section of. Underhill that's on the other side of Pleasant. Upper Pleasant Valley that looks feels like it's more like a part of Cambridge, but that's. Probably a story for a different day.
Cambridge is a troublesome one.
Yeah, I had that.
I I think, I think for these purposes, it may just be finding the the number of people closer. On the far, on the north. Easterly side of. Jericho. The north, south. To do an east-west dividing line, I think you're going to find that there's not enough on the east side to make that work. But I don't. I mean.
Yeah, well, no, I I did make it work on the other map, it wasn't so much, I guess east-west is sort of the wrong way to do it, because I created a Pac-Man district. Where you had the mouth was Jericho Underhill Village Center. And then the body of the Pac-Man was everything surrounding it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I don't know, maybe, maybe this is more compact and it's more intense.
Right, that's a, that's a compactness trade-off.
Yeah. That works out pretty well. Let's see if this updates. Nope. If you refresh that, Eric, will that? Accept my change? Yeah, there we go.
That's squiggly line is the Winuski River, right? Now.
Yeah, so you've got a nice river. Oh, oh, no, down, down below, yeah, no, there, I I try, I think that's a creek that has a northern boundary area, it just means. The the municipal line for the village of of Jericho. But, but yeah, that comes out to.
I think it's Brown's. Brown's River.
Jericho, I mean, that's a plus 24, that's almost right on the mark, split for that northern district.
So what do you want to look at next, Ron?
I am, now I'm doing. The other half of this district.
Okay. Okay.
So that one's a. Three sixty-five off the median, so we can tweak that or leave it. But it works. All right, that was the easy one. Now that, now you get into the real difficult stuff when you start talking about Essex. I mean, looking south on my map, avoiding Essex for the moment. I mean, you've got that really nice. Line where you now have Heinsberg. And. Charlot and Richmond all work as one town, one, one member of districts. And then Shelburne splits nicely between, you know, a, a, a half Shelburne and Shelburne-St. George district. Essex. Should get five and a quarter seats. The question is how to split it. Yeah.
Do you want Eric to refresh again?
Oh, yeah, sure. You can refresh again, Eric, and we'll see. Jericho Underhill is all squared away.
Okay.
So who's a. Who's a representative for message?
Well, there's four of them.
I know, and I can't seem to think of any.
Well, there's, they're relatively new. And then there was.
Meredith Redmond, she's one. Um. Huh?
They.
Or something like that. Oh, yeah, right, perhaps she, she's one. Okay, so I'm looking at the district map. Or Essex. Current, this is one of the two.
Eight dash one.
Yeah, I'm looking at eight-one.
And eight dash two, Lori Houghton is in that one. She's still in.
So that district is, if you're looking, Chris, you could zoom in on Essex there. The point where we can see the. At least the block groups. Oh, you've got counties. Can you see where it says up there block groups on the upper left-hand and below? Yeah, if you click on that. There we go.
That solves the mystery. I've been wondering where to find that.
So zoom out a little bit, now you're in the. Winouski.
Winouski Colchester.
So there's Essex. Zoom out just a little bit, yeah. That gives us the picture. So that eight-one is, if you see that little, uh, that little sort of Mount Everest. Looking peak. Eight-one encompasses that peak and then goes, looks like to the left, to the, um, to the right along the Jericho Road. And then down along the edge. And then along the bottom border with Williston and then up. The, uh, the western side. Uh, to Pearl Street, you can sort of see Pearl Street there, it looks like. Is it a little bit above that? It may, oh, I see what it is. Do you see where that road comes across the blue with the line of Colchester, that, that line that goes into the, into the five?
That's two A.
Yeah, so it comes along two A. So that, that's, that's eight-one. So that's two districts. That's a southern, they have already have this existing southern district there. So would it make sense to sort of start with that? The thing is, are we going to need to go down into Wells? Because what I've done here is I've put. There wasn't, the northern part of Essex was paired with, with. Westford. And what I've done here is to make the folks in the islands happy, uh, moved. That chunk of Milton back into Milton on the west. But that means you need to find something to pair that other bit of Milton with either on the north, south, or east. And I chose the east and paired it up with Westford. So now Jericho might actually need something from Willis. But I'm not sure. Or as Tom has done the math and said that it's, uh, if it's five and a quarter, maybe we can absorb that quarter into, uh. Into five and take, take advantage of the growth that's occurred. Any thoughts?
Let me make sure I understand. Chittenden eight-one is sort of the, the outer part of, it's not, it's not Essex Junction. Is that right?
It is. It's a, you see that, that line coming in? From the blue.
Yeah.
Colchester. That might be two, but I'm not sure. Uh, follow that down until you hit that road, the first road that's, that's sort of faded there. And then, yeah, right there. Down along that line, then up the, to the top of that little Mount Everest peak and down the peak. Until right, right about there. And then you go along Jericho Road, which is hidden by, hidden by the block group to the edge. That's the two districts of. At least that's, that's what it looks like to me. Uh, down to the bottom of Williston.
And that's eight.
That's eight-one.
I'm not so sure about that. Because the two, the two. House members who are in eight-two both list themselves as Essex Junction.
Maybe I'm looking at something wrong.
I'm not sure it matters really, in a sense.
Okay, well, I just try to, you know, start with, with what exists.
So.
I have to go and, and.
So, but having taken the Westford out of the picture. The. Read this.
Well, I'm kind of counting on Essex having grown enough that it doesn't need Westford anymore.
Right, no, I, I get it. That, that's so, it's, uh. What are we dealing, forty-two eighty-seven? For the perfect size.
Yes, four-two-eight-seven.
Would it help to see the maps of the current Essex districts?
I, I find it helpful if you can get them up there.
As Essex is, is shown as having just over twenty-two thousand residents.
At the town or the village or combined?
Combined.
So it's.
All right, so this is eight slash one. Let's, I'm sharing the raw at the moment.
Do you have the population size of Williston?
Williston.
Are they too big for two now?
Williston. Is ten thousand one hundred and three.
So yeah, they're too big for two. So I think we're going to have to do Essex. Four just one. Yeah, I think four, four districts from Essex and, and then bleed off a little bit from Williston to make this work. With, with an Essex.
I mean, Essex on its own can have five now.
What's that?
Can't Essex on its own support five members?
Yeah, it, it can. But Williston's too big and they gotta go somewhere.
Yeah, no, I, I don't disagree with that.
So I guess we can, we can do just Essex and have Williston try to make, make it work with South Burlington. I think either one would work culturally. I mean, if you take that Williston Road that connects South Burlington and Williston, that makes. You wouldn't have too much. Pushback on that, except maybe on principle. And then certainly Essex and Williston have connections too. It's just a question of which, which one. Makes sense. I mean, this is why this, this part of the state is so hard. I mean, all the balloons are overinflated and you keep squeezing them into one another.
Yeah. And the growth in. In Essex. Historically has been in the, in the village. More than in the town. I don't know if that's true. For the last ten years. But. I think it probably is. I mean.
Well, down there, little hollow on the left side.
So this is that bottom district. And the top district fits like a jigsaw puzzle piece for there. So let's eat two is the village.
Yeah.
Or the town rather, sorry. It's eight-one village. Which is this little gap. Fits right over here.
Well, you're showing, Eric, you're showing eight dash two now, correct?
Yes, is it flipping back and forth between eight-one and eight-two when I switch it?
Well, what? That eight, that eight-one appears to be the town.
Yep. Which, and that's.
That's the village.
If we go back to district builder, you can see the outline of that bottom of that village sweeping along the river pretty clearly. And then the town fits over the top.
Oh, yeah, so I was right. Only I got the, the wrong border. I was saying the border was with Williston, but it was actually the, the border between the town and the junction. So leaving. Thanks, Eric. So we do the, my guesses.
Yeah, yeah, that's the, the pressure there is.
So yeah, without Westford, that top. Rural district to the north is light by about four hundred and fifty-seven, probably more actually, because I've got a census block in there. So we need to, that'll have to come down. A little bit. And then. Split the junction, split. Split the town and then. And then I do think we'll need to probably bleed something off. Either Williston leads off north into Essex or it leads off west into Southborough. Do you want to try to map that? Or do you want me just to take those notes and do it myself later?
This is a fussy one. I, you may want to do it later and, and, and when you can. Maybe have. Less, fewer distractions.
And then I guess the other part of the map that I have that. Now, South Burlington. Depending upon what we do with Essex, just splits up pretty neatly. Um, as I said, those other Chittenden County, they're all, they're all pretty neat as well. I've got, I left. Waterbury open because I'm, I wanted to see if I can solve that stove Cambridge issue using, using Waterbury. Waterbury and Bolton, but I, I haven't given much thought on this map. And then the other challenging area we can look at today is Middlebury and Addison County. Just trying to look at.
Rob, you can also, you can swing that door closed if there's folks outside that are distracting or anything like that.
Oh, sure. Tom, would you close the door?
There. Thank you.
So what we have to do here is we have Sudbury on my map is no longer paired with Brandon, which is now its own single member district. So we have to figure out how that one fits in. And then Orwell, Shoreham, Whiting.
You'll have to remind me of where Sudbury is.
Oh, it's, it's down just
North of Rowland.
South, southwest of Middlebury.
There you go.
Or south of Middlebury, I guess, or at least that, that little handle-shaped thing that does.
A parallel, a parallel hologram, right there.
It's that little thing with the foot is, it's like a little loop is is Sudbury. It's got five hundred forty-five. So actually, if you, if you took Sudbury in with Orwell, Shoreham, and Bridgeport, that comes out almost perfectly. I've heard of it, sorry. We'll set that for now. What do you have there? Orwell's, Sudbury. It looks like Sudbury, Orwell, Shoreham, and Bridgeport. So write up the here, I'll hit accept. And then.
Orwell, Shoreham, Bridgeport.
Yeah, if you hit refresh, Eric, it'll, it should show, show up.
Then that long thing there would be Cornwall and Whiting.
Yep. Yep. That's where you create there.
I think Sudbury's probably had as much whiplash in this process over the last fifteen, down. So that's, what's the deviation on that?
It's almost perfect. It's eighteen light.
Okay.
Lester. So that is still, we need to find some people. If you do a Ocean, yeah, Gothen, unfortunately, I haven't gotten around to uploading the town lines on this, so I have to.
The Orwell.
Going to the district blocks to.
Yeah, and they're all in.
And do you have, how many people are in Gothen? Does anybody have the spreadsheet?
I've got it.
But.
Gothen? Gothen is one seven-two.
Oh, that might actually be perfect.
Cornwall. Lester, Sudbury, and Gothen.
Yep.
And what are you gonna do with Ripton? Other than tell jokes?
Sorry, this is he is putting in census block by census block, and the computer's running a little slow. Two-second delay, I've heard, if they click. All these clicks for one hundred and seventy people. Okay, you can refresh your, on your end again, Eric.
Cornwall, Salisbury, Lester, Gothen, and Ripton.
That is, so Whiting.
Oh, okay.
What's?
So Whiting doesn't show up with a town line on it here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's just, it's no big, it's that's not the only place in District Builder that that happens.
All right, so that is light, it's three thousand nine hundred ninety-five, two hundred ninety-two light, but that's within that's in the sweet spot. What's, what's Middlebury's? Do you have the spreadsheet, Tom?
Don't hurry up, it's good two members.
Is it a clean two members or is it a? We need a.
It's, I've got six hundred.
Ninety-one, ninety-one fifty-two, nine-one-five-two.
Right. Wait, that's, that's a pretty clean two-member district.
Now, I think there's always been some uncertainty there with the student population. I, we're probably not going to know for years what happened with the count, the actual headcount from the US Census in that regard.
Is there any, Eric, do you have the well, Middlebury is just a two-member district, so that would be helpful with it. Where do you think the line should be drawn? Any, any thoughts on east-west, north-south, south? It looks like it might be a. Well, that works. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna accept that, that little. No, I'm not gonna do it, Tom, because I found that there's a a combination of three census blocks on the lower left-hand side that is four thousand four hundred sixty-five. And if I accept that, then the other one should be pretty close. And we don't have to fill with the census blocks.
Well, the lower, in, in Middlebury, the if you're on the west side of the Otter Creek, I don't know if that shows up. But it's the west of Route Seven is the campus. Not just the campus for sure. But that's the dominant factor. Although it's geographically smaller than the portion of Middlebury on the east side. And Route Seven isn't the best place to, yeah, maybe that is the best place, you know.
Okay, so if you refresh, Eric, I'll show you what I got here. And this is gonna be, need to be tweaked. Because the pink one there on the left would show up is well, it's up, it's a hundred and seventy-eight above where we're above our line, but the blue one there is four hundred above our line, so we'll have to go into the census blocks and steal some from the blue and add to the pink, and they'll both be a little heavy, but they'll both be within the within the spread, assuming the rest of the map works out. Which you never know.
And what's, what's the that block of, of the upper left of the blue?
What's this?
Yeah. That's six hundred. It just trades one to the other.
And so we'll have to, we'll have to go in the blocks and, and I put a star next to that on my, on my notes, knowing that we have to go back and build, but we can build within within those boundary lines, assuming everything else works out. Maybe we need to steal something to the north or west. Okay, sure.
So you have Ripton, Hancock, and Granville.
I don't know what's up there.
Well, and then you throw in Lincoln, and I guess you could think you get about thirty-eight hundred out of that.
That's weird, the, Rob, the the northern town line in Middlebury is a straight line.
Yeah.
Does that pink? That's, the pink is just the westerly portion that you're yeah. So the, there's something, it looks like there's something missing north of that northerly pink bor- border. If I'm.
I'm pretty sure not.
Does look like this line is following some sort of body of water.
But then, there's a.
Eric, can you go to the just Google or go to the, a map of Middlebury? I, I think that's correct. Looking at, I mean, I'm looking at what I have on my paper map here, and it looks like that, that little jog at the top is actually a feature of the map of Middlebury, but let's be sure. Yes. The part to the west of the, of the Otter Creek. So would that be extending?
All right, okay, yeah, I apologize, this waybridge just got a, okay.
Okay, if you put Granville, Hancock, Ripton, Lincoln, and Starkborough together, you get forty-four seventy-eight. Or, or was that wrong?
Yeah. So. What were you saying, Tom?
Granville, Hancock, Ripton, Lincoln, and Starkborough.
I got three-nine-twelve, what am I missing? Oh, that's what, okay. I guess, you know, three-six-fifty, is that what you got?
No, forty-four seventy-eight.
Forty-four seventy-eight? I get four. Do I have an extra something in here? I say have. Hancock? Ripton.
Three oh one for Granville.
Huh?
Three oh one for Granville. Hancock, three fifty north.
Where the heck is Granville?
North of Hancock.
Oh. Oh, I've got Granville is already spoken for.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay. Where, you know. Oh, no, you're right, you're right. Okay, that's Randall. Randall looks awkward like one. Okay, so yeah, okay, there's Grandville. Hancock, Ripken, Grandville, Lincoln, and Starkspur. I get four-six-fifty out of that combination, but that works.
So Link, Starkspur, Lincoln, Grandville, Ripken, and Hancock?
Fifty-four seventy-eight. Your numbers of district building numbers are different. District builder can have some weird numbers. Except for now.
And what does that? Okay.
Now, this is gonna screw up the current Bristol et cetera, two-member district, but hang on, let me just get all the towns in this last one written down, so. You can refresh that now, Eric, we can see the big the big pink district. Cover's too brown. Yeah. All right, so that what happens when we do Bristol and Moncton together? Fifty-one, yeah.
Bristol's thirty-seven eighty-two. Moncton's two thousand seventy-nine.
Yeah. What about Bristol and New Haven? New Haven sixteen eighty-three.
This is how you get to your hundred and forty-nine districts, Rob.
Yeah. Bristol and, and New Haven makes seventy-four sixty-five. But how about adding in Waybridge? I don't think we've that's eight fourteen. Sixty-two seventy-nine, that's not enough. There's Waybridge? Well. All right. What about the existing district of Addison, Canton, Ferrisburg, and Waltham? Now, that's a two-member district with Virgens. Let's see how that one holds up, and work, work into the middle. Okay, well, so if we go if we leave that district as it is and split off Virgens and part of Ferrisburg, we're at five oh eight light, so we need to find although if we take what is that? Oh, that's part of New Haven. If you take part of New Haven and put it in there, we get three oh six above. That might work. I'm gonna accept that and see what Virginia thinks. You can refresh, Eric. Thank you.
Did you put Virgens in with New Haven, or is Virgens still on its own for now?
Right now, Virgens is on its own, but I'm thinking that that portion of Ferrisburg to its northeast will probably have to go with it. What's the population of Virgens?
Twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, so it's gonna need some help. Okay, so hang on, let me just ready. And this is part of New Haven. Part of New Haven, yeah. Part, I think that's part of the Haven, unless, unless, is there a little town to the southwest of New Haven that's just not showing up on the sun? Waybridge? Maybe that's what it is, maybe that's Waybridge. So it's Addison, Canton, Ferrisburg. That would be Waybridge, that would be perfect. Canton. Sixty-four. Waltham. Hartford. Waybridge. Oh, okay, you know what? Waybridge, New Haven. Yep, 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 yep. It's not part of the Haven, it's Waybridge. Just on my map, that says it's one thing, so sorry about that, Waybridge, I did not mean to diss. So it's actually no New Haven in there, and it is Waybridge. All right. Now, we will it's seventy-two eighty-two. What I get for that district is four-five-nine-three. Sounds more like it.
What, what are you adding up there, Rob?
Uh, that's, that's that gray district that we just put together there on the left. That's a that's Addison, Canton.
Right, right.
All of Ferrisburg, part of Ferrisburg and Waybridge. Now, I'm gonna try. Yep, Virgens and Ferrisburg, that remaining bit of Ferrisburg comes out to three-eight-seventy-seven, which is light four-ten, but if I can pull just a little portion of a census block from that other part of Ferrisburg, we can make that even out pretty well. So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna do that. How much is Ferrisburg? Okay, I think you're ready to refresh there. Okay, so it's that light blue. So Ferrisburg is the Virgens is a little square, it's divided in half diagonally. And then Ferrisburg is the gray and the blue at the top of that district. Bristol and New Haven.
So that, that's all of Virgens?
All of Virgens and a chunk of Ferrisburg.
So that leaves you with Moncton.
And this is where the proof and the pudding come together.
Have you already blocked in Bristol?
No. So I'm looking
Or Lincoln, Bristol and Lincoln.
Lincoln is, is spoken for. Lincoln is in that pink to the right. Bristol.
Thirty-seven eighty-two.
Yeah, Bristol, New Haven, and Ferrisburg of the eighty-three eighteen, which is pretty good. What is in Moncton? Ferrisburg is spoken for. All of it? Yes. Oh, okay.
I thought, I thought we'd already used up Starkspur, too. Yeah, you have.
Well, what I get is Bristol and New Haven together are too big. Yeah. So how big is Moncton? Tell me that Moncton would twenty-seven-nine. What did you say? Two-zero-seven-nine. Two-zero-seven-nine. Seventy-seven forty-four. Fine courses. Where are we over someplace in one of those neighboring districts? Where we could hold something? Well, let's see. Who's that? Middlebury is plus four hundred. Pretty much. I'm gonna hit accept on this seventy-five forty-four sized district, and then we'll cut it in half, and Yeah, yeah, Middlebury's heavy. Both, both the Middlebury districts are heavy, one by one seventy-eight, one by four hundred. So so I'm gonna assume actually, would you refresh, please, Eric? You there, Eric?
You may have stepped
You may have stepped away.
No.
Thank you.
Sorry, guys, my headphones got knocked out a little. I didn't hear you come through.
Oh, that's okay, no worries. Okay, so as it comes in, if you zoom back in on, on Bristol, a tan looking thing. Again, if you could go to block groups instead of counties. So for the next district, I'm gonna create we definitely want Moncton.
Tom and Rob, I have to step away from this now, but this is, I hope I've been of some assistance. This has been worth, worthy effort. worth, worthy effort. I look forward to seeing when, Rob, when you can, maybe not this afternoon, but when you can fill in the rest of the blanks.
That's the plan.
Without jumping out a window.
Well, hopefully, I'll get this done by the end of today or tomorrow at the latest. And we can be ready to debate it on Friday.
Okay.
A little out of the way, we can hack up Shelburne.
Okay, good. See you later. Bye.
Thank you, Tom. Eric, if you've got other things to do with just Tom and myself in the room, we probably, uh, could let you go.
Yeah, we're just making sure, um, I think for another seven minutes. I guess no one else is gonna show up, so yeah, I'll kill Zoom, um, and then I'll just send them the minutes. I don't know if I wanna post them, but we'll note that, um, there was no call.
All right, sounds good. Well, thank you so much for your help.
Yeah, of course.